I think it's raining at least, someone. Ice is what I was about like, give me one or the other like.
He was saying thirty day cycle.
Yeah, if you don't go anywhere, it's fine, but.
Thirty days from there.
Yep.
It's bringing so.
Gerald, see you brought Cheryl. Good morning.
Maybe it's the other way around, you don't really know.
What?
Cheryl could be bringing Gerald.
Okay, so she's got a point.
So I'm gonna give you a little bit of stuff.
Oh, bro, there we go.
Hey, man is the head of the house, he's got the head, but the neck turns it the white.
I got, I have my planes all done, so I can concentrate on giving you more. More um.
I'm not.
More. Yeah.
Rattle.
Is it gonna be a short meeting then?
In a hurry.
Man, there's a lot of items, but I don't know if they're gonna take a long time, they don't look.
Ben's spending all kinds of money.
I guess, I guess space to take.
I think you've become a groundhog. That, that's what you call farmers that farm ten thousand acres.
And gotta eat.
Just a non, just a non farmer, not, not farming, um.
Very, very similar.
Talk, um, lingo. Lingo, yeah.
Sure.
I email all of you, but don't forget of the second, your campus tomorrow.
When?
Nine o'clock.
At the clock.
Who, who's spending all the money this week?
Landfill.
Landfill?
And Ben.
Very good.
Way to go, Ben.
Yeah.
A temper did a little.
It's what it's for.
Three. Oh dude, is this the, the month that we pay the libraries and give them their money?
So we do it twice a year. You know, so you say maybe good to do in a way.
Let's say thirty. With the pledge.
Pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. First thing we need to do is approve the agenda, so.
I'll second it.
Been moved in seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hope for the minutes that Kurt emailed us and he's not able to be with us this morning, Kurt Tucker. For the record. Uh, public comments. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Go ahead.
Um, I just wanna thank Ben again for beating Uphanda back up and running as fast as he did. Um, it was supposed to, originally they were gonna, it's gonna be out clear through October, November part, maybe into December, so I. Since I'm always picking money, I just wanna reiterate that, I'm very personally grateful for the traffic out there. Landfill traffic, thank you very much for getting that going. Yeah, I know you pushed on it, appreciate it.
Yes.
That way Gerald can get to town. Back and forth.
Without getting a pot iron.
Without.
Alright, cool, those public comments. Uh, discussing approved the eleven ten. Um, regular minutes and eleven twelve special minutes, so move. Good move.
I'll second.
And seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, discussion of possible action to approve utility, oh, I'm sorry, that's part of Ben. Road report, go ahead, Ben.
Um, we're looking here, four and sixteenth, and we, next today again, we finished up the South of E sixty-six, uh, the last week, um, we're starting with Rock and Chelsea this week. Um, this past week, on the, that, we got the program open that project, so we'll be working on the project closeout, preparing for that. Um, let's see here, uh, ECI, um, they've got all the concrete board for that bridge, um, just need to finish up the dirt work, um, then that should be open in a couple weeks, um, there on S Avenue. Uh, and then minutes, I put these out, uh, put these, give these to Karen on Friday. And I'm hoping for the best, and the best didn't happen, so they did not finish the left of asphalt on main line. Um, I tried to manifest it as the young kids say these days, but it did not, it did not happen. Um, so they are, they broke down Saturday and Sunday, um, but they should be, hopefully today, be finishing up the main line. Like the drive, driveways, um, this, this week or today. So, um, and then they'll be working on it, uh, shoulder rock and then all the driveways, um, to, you know, match, match what, what's been in place, so. Um, and then the tractors, um, we forgot to put that on the agenda, or not an agenda, but my report last week, we went ahead and sold those, the Ford went for thirty-two and the Deutsch went for five thousand, so, um, I think we'll be waiting on them to pay and whatnot, and then good for those. Um, then, um, I didn't put it on here, but, uh, three hundred street, street bridge, that's just northwest of Toledo here. That will be let, um, tomorrow, Tuesday here, and that will be kind of next week, I'll maybe have a little bit better idea of what that, uh, project will cost, so, um, we got one point five million from the city bridge, uh, grant from the state, um, hopefully it will be close to that, um, we'll kind of split whatever's over that one point five with the city Toledo, um, so. Um, since it's a joint kind of bridge there, um, then I have a whole bunch of purchase agreements, um, for its own. Right away, those need to be purchased, um, the first two, the Creeds and um, those two purchase agreements are for the E twenty-nine, um, highway bridge, um, signed the final plans, uh, last week. Um, and keep those, it's about one point two, both are, they're pretty small, for the same amount of acreage that we're perfecting, it's one point two acres and, um, with that, it costs about fifteen hundred apiece, so for the north side and the south side, so, um. And that, that project will be let in February, um, to be up to there.
So that's thirty thousand dollars. You don't owe for that?
Uh, no.
Fifteen hundred. Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Yes, okay, yeah.
They get a little bit of concern.
You're gonna have to buy a lot more property to become a good sized farmer.
And usually.
Point one, two acres, I think you gotta pick the, never mind.
You gotta pick better ground.
I'm gonna suffer, but if you.
Yeah, we can, we can do each one individually, I guess, and then I can, once we throw them all, I can do the signatures and all that stuff.
Sure.
As originals.
Two totalism.
Well, the ones that I've talked to is the E twenty-nine, the Creeds, little bits, so if we wanted sorry, making it confusing, but if we wanna approve the Creeds one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the land and purchase of the Creeds estate.
The chairman sign.
And hit, and make the chairman sign. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make the next motion to approve the purchase agreement and easement documents on purchasing Larry and Victoria Holce um, on E twenty-nine bridge replacement and authorize the chairman to sign.
I'll second that, and I have a question for how much is that one gonna cost?
The same.
Same amount.
Good thinking. Uh, hundred, not fifty thousand.
Total fifteen thousand.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, one point two acres.
Any other question?
We all understood it.
Just maybe, sure. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the next one is on I Avenue, uh, Bridge Projects, um, that will be let in March, that's just, um, south of three seventieth, that I'm not remembering correctly in my head where that's at, but that's, um, got bridges down there that we're replacing, uh, in March, and it's point one, three acres. Um, and also some temporary easement that we're purchasing as well, um, that, um, so that'll, I mean, once we're done with the project, it'll be back to landowners, but we still need to, um, purchase the temporary, uh, easement. And that, all in total is, uh, one thousand nine hundred ninety dollars for that, so.
Okay, so it's for Bidwell.
Bidwell, yes.
I'll make the motion to re-accept this purchase agreement from Caleb, Caleb L. Bid, Bidwell. And authorize the chairman to sign it.
I'll second that.
That's an iron bridge, isn't it?
Yep, it's a truss, yep.
A truss bridge, yep. A good deal.
Okay.
Alright, uh, they moved and seconded, any other discussion, questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oops, motion carries. Utility.
Yeah, for use, communication, USA Communications initially, yep.
You got a question here?
According to these. The three hundred street bridge. Where is that, is that east or west of sixty-three?
That'd be west of sixty-three.
So just the ridge road?
Uh, yep. Yep, the Z line, which, yeah.
And so when, when will that be taken out, approximately?
Um, approximately, um, they'll probably be taken out in big April timeframe.
And there's two ridges on that one, right, so it's the one above Deer Creek?
Uh, yes, it's the Deer Creek, the large.
Yeah.
Yeah, the second one.
Yes, the second, not the Ox Pulver.
That actually would be about the roundabout time and the seventy-three.
Which is do it all in one year, just get it down now.
That'd work out great, because then you only have one major detour.
That's, that's where, in a way, it'll help traffic on H, uh,
Right.
Coming, probably coming around.
Go by H, please.
Uh, they're gonna have to go out, they're gonna have to go west, I guess, to.
By Monarch. He's on H, so you have to go up to H and then back to get to that.
No, but I was saying that there's the H that go onto pavement.
Right.
But you'd have to go further. Uh, I feel like that would be way out of the way, but I guess people might take it up, but yes, maybe picture.
Maybe. Monument out there or something.
So I guess the, the USA on the first.
Yeah.
Um, so that one is just really on the counting line, um, right, where, um, kind of our paving stuff, so they're on E sixty-six. They're placing some fiber and kind of connecting, um. They have, they have oh, they have a few pump, uh, their, um, pits, their water, not water pits. Anyway, their water pumps for their town are on the north side of the road and south side, um, looks like they're doing some fiber, um, a connection with that, so.
So it's mostly, you'll be Benton, right?
Uh, yep, mostly in Benton, uh, but it's just crossing, um, underneath E sixty-six and that, they'll be more of that underneath, uh, thirty-three, thirty-six, which is.
What do they plan to do?
Uh, they did not, uh, say, they were.
This won't interfere with any of the, the detours we're having planned for next year, right? Should be done before then.
Yes.
Then I'll make a motion that we approve the utility permit with the USA Communications and authorize the chairman to sign.
I'll second it.
Yeah, been moved and seconded, any other questions for Ben? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one, with Windstream.
Next one is, um, they're connected to a house, um, there on three hundred sixtieth street, uh, will be virtually, but they're placing conduits underneath the road, um, and that's gonna be making their way to, they'll be on the back slope, um, their property and they'll go go into the, the residence.
The one person's just like jumping onto the line or something, and then they're running it up to their house?
Yeah. Um, yeah, that looks like just bringing it to their house.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve utility permit with Windstream and authorize chairman to sign.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. If Ben gets away out a question for him.
Okay.
Alright. Wait till you go. Yeah, so, when, when Windstream, not Windstream, when, um, Salt Creek Wind One is done, and they're reclaiming some of that rock and stuff? Can we have them dump it in our place so that we don't have to pay for it?
We are doing that, as we speak.
Thank you.
We got some, um, being placed in Garland, um, I think we'll be trying to get them to, um, put some kind of in our shop shed area, uh, there on, they buy the landfill too, um, so.
So I'm just thinking, if, when they're having to move that stuff, it would be cheaper for us to say, sure, dump it here.
Yeah, because, so they've, they've done a little bit already in, uh, Garland, um, there, it's, uh, all we have to do is kind of push it up and, you know, get it, you know.
And look, there's any way for us to save money and, and take care of our roads, so, yeah, so, thanks.
Um, well, slowly but surely signing all these purchase agreements, so then that will all, oh, gosh. And the rest of the, uh, parents' notary.
But the Durapatch are running today?
Say what?
The Durapatch is running today.
Yep, I mean, we have a few, I mean, usually it's not nice enough, but we're still got a few, few spots we can.
Good.
Yeah.
You wanna go?
Help him?
Yeah, you will, yeah.
Yours, what they call. Your experience.
Oh.
That you, they, you are what they call experience.
Me old.
Experience.
Oh, there's.
Yeah, I didn't say old.
Yes.
One more thing for you.
Yep.
Um, in the claims, there's a new equipment from Altoff for number six oh three for fifty-five thousand, what was that?
A loader.
A loader?
Yeah, we got a loader, so.
Did it replace a certain one, or?
It was replacing kind of what we had for, uh, Deutsch, was in Garland.
Yep.
Um, and we used that to stockpile, um, dirt and also salt sand, um, and
Okay.
It was, um, really nice to have something like that to be able to drive to, um, Bladbrook as well, that we've had to drive our loader from, we've stockpiled, there's a location in Bladbrook that we've stockpiled before, and we've gotten a permission from the city of Bladbrook to stockpile rock, and that here, kind of in there, north of town there.
Yep.
And so, we've got all the loader from Toledo all the way, so, it'd be kind of a nice.
We have a few different loaders around, and this was just replacing that Deutsch one?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that a CAD or a John Deere?
It's a CAD.
The dog is a tractor with a bucket on.
Yep, and now a loader.
We're replacing it with a loader, yes.
Yep.
So it's definitely a good.
And a good.
Right.
And it saves wear tear on the vehicles and that removed.
Yep.
Is that the same size that's in Trax?
It's a, yeah, it's pretty close.
Low solar, no shoes.
He said.
I'd say.
It's a cat.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, I work.
Oh, no.
And, uh, I mean, I see, yes, to acknowledge that.
Mark here, mark here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hire a foreman then? Very good, you hire a foreman, yeah. Foreman, we're, we're. Oh no, we, we got a bunch of interviews to do still, yeah. We, we got a bunch of, a bunch of answers, I'm surprised how many of them seem.
Must be, must be a high paying job.
Not yet, no.
I think, um.
That benefits.
I don't know, benefit probably, yeah, things and benefits. And be close to home, I think there's something to it, live in the area, you're working.
Travel over.
Yeah.
At least this one doesn't end up from Houston. We had no one to fight for this job from Houston, but for another thing that I was, another board I was on, we had somebody to fight, Houston, Texas.
Maybe they're in Dallas.
Oh. I was like, oh no. I drove there a year ago, and it's Dallas is getting pretty bad too, Dallas, Fort Worth.
Good sticky notes, Ben, I always love when people send me those and they tell me, just sign here.
Well, actually, that was.
What I have to do, that's the minimum, read it, but still sign here.
Great.
Alright.
It is.
Okay. Thank you for your patience, that's why.
That's almost dumb, too.
I know, and I took up all, all the time, so.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, guys.
Next item, discussion of possible action to approve of appointing Laura Kopsa to the Civil Service Commission. We had a temporary appointment or interim appointment, um, Steve Byer was up for reappointment and he asked to not be appointed to the full term. And, um, said he would serve until we found somebody, and to be able to find somebody has not been easy for that position, and, um, asked, um, Karen to reach out to Laura, and Laura has accepted, um, the invitation, I guess, that she's willing to be appointed, and I think that that, she would be a, a good one, she'd do a great job there. So we would just need a motion to appoint. I will make that motion to appoint Laura Kopsa to the Civil Service Commission.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oops, motion carries. We'll let Steve know and just, you just send an email or you mail him.
All of her, send a letter or something.
Yeah, and let Laura know that, it's efficient. Okay, the next one is to discussion of possible action. To approve appointing Richard Arp to the Board of Health, this is for
Casey.
Casey is December, it comes up in December, so when that term is over, then there would just be a natural transition, Casey's too busy to continue, our sheriff on the, uh, Board of Health, he let them know, they started looking for replacement, um, he, Richard, and I have talked, uh, he's talked with the people at the Board of Health and he knows what's expected of him there too, and he's willing to do it, so, we just entertain a motion to appoint Richard.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Richard Arp to the Board of Health for Casey's term coming up on December. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oops, motion carries. And discussion of possible action to amend the eleven ten twenty twenty-five B moratorium on battery storage in Tamek County, this is just a typo, I think, um.
Yep.
Instead.
It's just typo, there's a couple at the bottom that said data centers instead of battery storage, we had stole from the same day, so it's just fixing it to say battery storage instead of data center, is all that we're doing here, and I'll make that motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded, um, to clean, clean up the language on the resolution. Um, because it's a resolution, I think we'll just do a roll call anyway, just on the amendment.
Homer?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
You know?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye. That. Yes, it is. Next, this claims. We have claims this week of two eight seven comma, two four seven, period, sixty-five. Two hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents, and I make a motion that we approve them.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So then the last thing is public comments again, if anybody in the public has anything else. Questions since we've.
I have one comment.
Other meaning?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure had that show. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, so I got a call last week. Complimentary of, he had been very, it's not anybody that has been in here regularly, he was very opposed to um, increasing supervisors to five, thinking it would be very, very expensive. And he's been watching their budget every week, and this is a David Turner thing, and very, he called me to tell me he's very pleased that we are spending sometimes a fourth less each week of what we were spending last year, the year before, and the year before, so I just wanted to pass that along, I, I know he wants to remain anonymous, but, um, after hearing him complain for such a long time about three to five, and how much money the county was spending, um, he's in a position of trying to hold the line on spending where he lives, um, in his area, not just his house, his area, and so it was good, it was a good call, it was good to hear from him, because it was the first time he's called and said something really good, so I was really impressed that you guys are able to cut budget as much as you have been. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the size of the battery places that they wanna stall and need the AI thing, physical size, do you have any idea?
So I don't think they're, they're too big themselves, I mean, the actual unit is, is fairly small. Um, the batteries, I don't know, but the, the data, um, the data storage units, they had told us when we were talking to one of the economic developer, developers, that they really aren't that large, out in, they have one in Al, Altoona, like this whole facility, uh, with hundreds of them. But it's a, it's fairly decent sized facility, but the actual uh, unit itself is not that big, but they require a lot of power and a lot of water.
The lines are overhead or under train, they're tending to them.
I assume that they're all underground.
Think of kind of like a hoop building kind of maybe size, I don't know, but I'm sure they could be all different kinds of sizes, Grundy Center has one too, I've never driven by it, but they have one as well, a data center.
Yeah, they have them in warehouses in there. They're huge warehouses, but I think that they contain several of the units that within the warehouse. And if you're leaving Bonverall, or what, Bonverant, depends on where you're coming from, heading west on eighty, you'll see the huge, it's been there for quite some time now, the Facebook plantation, it is huge, um, and that's a major hub for Facebook.
More than type building?
Oh no, these are concrete poured buildings, they're, they're designed to withstand a huge attack because there's so much data running through them, so I believe they have internal power, I think even have a, a big pond out there too. Because there's so much data running through them, so that, I believe they get it on power, I think even have a, a big pond out there too. So, the, for the water run, you have to have that anymore.
From the burbs side of Haiti?
It's on the north side of Haiti, yeah, it was put in several years ago.
That's what time it is.
Yeah, and then I know, I drove towards, I went to the airport a couple of times, and see your Rapids has a huge Google facility. On the east side of Edgewood, and they're building up, I have no idea what they're building on the other side, but they're leveling an awful lot of there. I, I do know that there's a data center going to, a casino, and, uh, Wayne Arnold. I think it's supposed to be back online in twenty-eight, so. Keep an eye on what's going on around us, so. Where you want one at your place, Jack, is that leaving, no?
Pretty good access, right off of the thirty though.
Do an offer ramp right there. Alright, we'll take the motion to.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most of you curious, we are adjourned.